Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for the webcasting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Abby. Before I ask members to introduce themselves, I'm announcing that Item 9A, the application on the 25/02/046/ full at Malik House, 41 Springfield Road in Sheffield 72GE, this application is being deferred. The item will not be considered at this afternoon's meeting. Following deferral of the item at the October Planning Committee, the officer report was revised and updated. However, it has been identified that the October Committee report has been incorrectly reproduced as part of the main agenda papers. The officers apologise for this error. This means that the correct report has not been available for review and scrutiny, and it is therefore not appropriate for the application to be considered this afternoon. In addition, the applicant submitted a revised site layout and noise assessment which was received at close of play on the eve of the committee. This was only published on the public file today, leaving no time for interested parties to review it, and it has left insufficient time for officers to properly consider this aspect of the proposal and present an updated position and recommendation to members. We hope that this item will be before you at next month's Planning and Highways Committee. My name is Mike Chaplin, I'm a councillor for Southie Ward, and I'm one of the two joint chairs of this Planning and Highways Committee. I'll now ask each member to introduce themselves in turn.
Good afternoon, my name's Al Woodcock, I'm councillor for East Echolsfield, and I'm joint chair with Mike.
Hello, I'm Janet Riddler, I'm the councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Good afternoon, my name's Tony Downing, and I'm councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Good afternoon, my name's Mark Witker, and I'm also councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don. Thank you.
Good afternoon all, I'm councillor Gary Wetherall for Shagreen Brideside Ward.
Hello, Marianne Elliott, councillor for Gleamness Valley.
Henry Nottegg, councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Glenys Chapman, councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Andrew Sanger, councillor for Forwood Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, also councillor for Forwood Ward.
Thank you. I have received apologies for absence from councillors Nikki Bellfield, for which councillor Laura Moynihan, if she can get here, should be substituting, but she's not been able to get here yet. Item 3, exclusions of the press and public, there are no items that require that. Item 4, declarations of interest. Are any, do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? I'll take that as a no. Item 5, minutes of the previous meeting. Are you happy to approve them as a correct record? If I could just read this out, and then I'll say right. So to ask members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting, of the Planning and Highways Committee meeting held on the 16th of September 2025, subject to the inclusion...
Oh no, sorry, that should be the 14th of October, that's not...
Sorry, I was speed reading. The meeting held on the 14th of October 2025, subject to the inclusion of And Victoria Keys after the wicker in the minutes, numbers 58.7 and 58.8. That was an oversight in the previous minutes. So Andrew's hand shot up first, and then I've got...
Thank you Chair, I mean, it's just, I mean, thank you for that, that clarification is really important, that the point that myself and councillor Elliot were making was that it wasn't just the wicker, that the proposal from, the proposal we'd heard very clearly from Harrowshire Historic Buildings and Victoria Society was the link to the Castle Gate site, it wasn't just the wicker, it was the Victoria Keys area as well, so glad that, that change can be accommodated, thanks Chair.
Yes, you're quite right Andrew. Marianne?
Thank you, yeah, I'm happy with that amendment, if And Victoria Keys is added, all the appropriate points after the wicker, and, you know, thank you to Robin Hughes for pointing that out to us.
Yes, it was an oversight. Henry?
Yeah, thank you Mike, it's a very small one. On page 13 it says the name change to the Calum Island Conservation Area. I understood that it came up in our meeting, that it was previously called the Calum Island Industrial Conservation Area.
Is anyone able to comment on that?
Yeah, it was commented, but it wasn't agreed on or moved or seconded, so it just went forward as the title that's in the report, so it was the resolution.
Will it come back for review at a later date? It's whether people, I suppose, feel it's really necessary. I'm just gonna get Michael Johnson's microphone turned on.
I'd agree that it's arguably a moot point, because what it was called is still going to be what it was called, and what it is going to be called is still going to be what it is going to be called. It's more or less a typo.
I can offer no more sensible comment than that. Are we safe to move on? I thought I saw councillor Wetherall's hand shoot up. Item 6, site visits, the next date, the next site visit is to be advised, but it usually takes place the day before the meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee, unless there's an impending bank holiday, which there isn't. So, we move to business, with item 7, tree preservation order number 494 at Rivlin Park Road, Sheffield S65GE. And it's Simon to present.
Thank you Chair. My name is Simon Farimond, and I am the community tree officer who deals with planning matters related to tree protection. This morning I am seeking confirmation of TPO 494 for trees on Rivlin Valley Road. The TPO was made on the 26th of June to protect five trees, T1 to T5 located on the site. A copy of the order with its accompanying map is attached to Appendix A in the report. The council received notification from members of the public that vegetation and tree clearance works had taken place at the above address. A site visit was conducted on the 23rd of June 2025 by myself, and evidence collected showing that the site had been cleared back to bare earth from being densely vegetated, with the exception of nine retained trees and boundary vegetation. Four and after images of the site are found in Appendix E and on the screens. Soil disturbance and minor reprofiling was found to have taken place throughout the rooting areas of several retained trees, and there was visible damage to surfing, surface roots, photos also in Appendix E. The degree of damage to subsoil roots and rooting areas could not be determined during the site visit, but there was evidence of heavy plant movement in close proximity to the trees. This will have significantly degraded the soil structure through compaction, potentially resulting in a long-term impact on the health of the trees. During the visit, a telephone conversation with the current owner was conducted, and it was communicated that the site was cleared for use as a dog park. However, at that time, no planning application had been received by the local planning authority for the change in use, so this could not be confirmed. Aside from the visible root damage and occasional poor pruning of lower minor branches, the trees were generally found to be in good structural and physiological condition, with the exception of four ash trees. These trees were all exhibiting signs of reduced vitality consistent with the impact of ash dieback disease. This disease has the potential effect of limited, limiting the expected lifespans of the ash trees. The trees were assessed using the Tree Evaluation Method for Preservation Orders, TEMPO, a copy of which can be found at Appendix B of the report. The trees T1 to 4 were assessed as having a score of 15, and T6 achieved 16, all of which provide clear indications of their suitability for protection. All trees are highly visible from the relatively high-traffic-volume thoroughfare of Hollins Lane and residential Rivlin Park Road, which provides access to the busy footpaths of Rivlin Valley. Their visual prominence means they collectively make a valuable contribution to the amenity of the area. The potential loss of the boundary ash trees to ash dieback disease will further increase the visibility of the protected trees. All trees are found, it's repetition, sorry, the trees have good retention span, conserva- conservative estimates of 20 to 40 years or 40 to 100 years was given depending on the species' potential lifespan. An assessment of the location of which the trees were growing indicates that nothing would curtail the trees' potential retention, subject to there being minor pruning which could address any obstruction caused by low branches. Given the nature of the works which had already been completed, the unconfirmed intentions of the site, and the degree of potential harm to the local amenity if the trees were to be lost, it was considered expedient in the interests of amenity for TPO 494 to be made. One duly made objection to the TPO and two representations in favour were received. These can be found in Appendix D. The objection is summarised as follows, along with my responses. Removal of the vegetation on site was unlawful act of responsible management. This has not been questioned as a lawful act, and is only relevant to the making of the order insofar as it indicates a significant change in intense, intended use of the site, which has resulted in damage to the roots and soil structure within the retained trees' rooting areas. Both of these factors support the council's assessment protecting the trees is expedient. Damage only occurred to minor surface roots of the retained trees. The only visible damage to the trees' roots, as obtained by an above-ground inspection, was found to be minor with one larger root on Sycamore T4. However, as stated previously, more significant damage may have taken place underground, which was not visible, and the movement of heavy machinery in the rooting areas will have degraded soil structure through compaction. This form of degradation which prevents water, nutrient and air movement by reducing or removing poor space can be as significant as major root severing by restricting physiological functions. The intention of the works was made clear during a telephone conversation. Although the owner stated their future intentions for the site via a telephone call, no planning application had been received by the LPA, so these could not be confirmed. Additionally, the changing of use of a site, even minor, may still potentially require actions which threaten existing trees, such as minor soil level changes in the creation of impermeable surfaces. It is inconsistent to describe the trees as damaged and at risk, as well as being healthy with long-term value. The trees were determined to be at risk due to the impacts of the already completed works and the potential for further works relating to unconfirmed intentions for the site. The visible impacts were soil structure degradation and minor root damage. These facts do not have a bearing on the trees' long-term amenity values and the conditions in which they were found at the time of the visit. The trees have not been maintained, and the TPO will unreasonably restrict responsible tree management. A TPO does not present, prevent responsible tree management, but ensures that any work is subject to appropriate oversight to safeguard public amenity. The process of applying for consent to carry out works to a TPO-protected tree controls the quality and impact of the work to prevent disproportionate harm to high-value trees. Additionally, exemptions exist which mean the authority's consent is not required to carry out certain work to trees. This includes urgent work to remove an immediate risk of serious harm. The works which have improved the trees' amenity value is also being used as justification to restrict further management, which is a contradiction. The amenity value of the retained trees was only indirectly improved through removing other trees and vegetation from the site, thus increasing their visual prominence. The work which was actually done to the trees, poor pruning of lower branches, has overall had the minor negative effect of creating wounds and branch stubs which are sites for possible disease and decay ingress. The work which has been undertaken, both to the trees and the entire site, threatens the trees rather than directly increases their amenity value. The trees do not require legal protection as there are no, as there is no intention to remove them. The order has a function beyond solely that of preventing immediate removal. It also provides a preventative legal mechanism designed to ensure that trees of significant amenity value are protected from future harm, whether intentional or inadvertent. If the landowner has expressed an intention not to remove trees, then that has relevance to the council's consideration as to whether it is expedient to make and confirm an order, but it should be weighed against other factors, including the actions already undertaken on the site and the potential that further works may occur. The Norway spruce and hawthorn do not have sufficient amenity value or ecological value to justify protection. The amenity value of the trees has been assessed using a proper system of amenity valuation and by an officer with the appropriate experience and qualification qualifications to undertake such an assessment. The TEMPO assessment system is widely used by many local planning authorities, as it covers all the factors the current government guidance states the local planning authorities should consider when assessing amenity. Using this system and drawing on the expert opinion of the officer who considered a range of factors, the trees are found to have the requisite amenity to merit protection within order. Community benefit is being undermined by preventing lights being put in the Norway spruce at Christmas. The TPO prevents the cutting, topping, lopping or uprooting of trees which are subject to the order. It also prohibits willful damage or destruction of these trees. Installing lights in the trees is not in the list of prohibited acts, and thus the order has no effect on this. The owners were not approached by the council for consultation or discussion prior to the TPO being made. There is no requirement for the council to undertake consultation before making a TPO. This is an emergency temporary protection can be put in place without the need for a period where trees are known to be intended for protection but could still potentially be removed. The consultation period follows the temporary order being made and before confirmation to allow objections and representations to be considered by the local planning authority. In closing, my recommendation is that the TPO is confirmed without modification to protect these trees which make a valuable contribution to the amenity of the local area. Thank you.
Thank you Simon. We have one speaker who wishes to speak against this application, that is John Clare. Would you like to come to the table? And if you press the button on the right, that should get your microphone working. You have up to five minutes to speak on this.
Right, afternoon everyone. We've only had sight of the full TPO report for a week, but in short, we found it to be hostile, full of errors and defamatory. Some of the key errors include the report mistakenly identifies Rivlin Park Road as Rivlin Valley Road. It states four ash trees were excluded from the TPO, yet the map only shows three, and one of these is an oak tree. Our appeal letter was published with our names and addresses redacted, but the opening sentence still identified us as the landowner, which is a breach of GDPR. The original TPO letter states that the site was cleared back to bare earth with the exception of five trees, yet the report now says nine trees. Firstly, we've got a report that can't accurately count the trees, but secondly, the wording makes it sound as though we've cleared a plot full of beautiful trees. In reality, the council planning department has described the plot as neglected for many years, characterised by overgrown scrub and brambles, and used as a dumping ground. The report's images are from Google Maps in 2023. This is not what the land was like when we bought it. We have maintained all healthy, mature vegetation, and have only removed two small diseased ash trees following the inspection of a tree surgeon. We have photographic evidence of this, but weren't allowed to present it today. The errors in the report, however, are not limited to just factual mistakes, it also contains misleading information. The original TPO letter says the degree of the damage to the subsoil roots and degradation of the soil structure could not be determined, yet the full report now describes this damage in detail, claiming it will have a long-term impact on the health of the trees. If the damage could not be determined on the 26th of June, how can it now be described in detail across several paragraphs? Not only is this claim invalidated, it's also incorrect. As a civil engineer, I routinely calculate bearing pressures on soil as part of my job. Mathematically, because the machine's weight is distributed over its tracks, it, the ground was compacted less by the 13-tonne machine than it was done by the community tree officer when he was walking around. I know that that sounds counterintuitive, I'll happily answer any questions on that at the end. It should also be noted that when we were clearing the land, we used a land rig, which is specifically designed to aerate the soil and reduce compaction. Time does not allow me to list all of the inconsistencies of the report, but even one of these errors calls into question the care and accuracy of the entire report and gives us ground for complaint. It's not acceptable to produce a TPO report with such a plethora of errors as it questions its legal validity. The truth is, however, none of this matters, the crux of the TPO is the amenity value of the trees. I do not understand why the report even mentions the land clearance work we have done other than to blacken our name. At the time, there was no TPO on the trees, and we were fully within our rights to fell all of them if we wanted to. We didn't because we want to retain the trees. The TEMPO assessment claims there is a foreseeable threat to the trees because our intentions with the land are unclear. This is ridiculous. We've already cleared the land and left the trees in situ. Our intentions to retain the trees could not be clearer. The trees have never been, are not, and never will be in any danger whatsoever. The fact that these particular trees are subject to a TPO is even more ludicrous. One is a hawthorn, which is essentially an overgrown hedge row bush. Another is a non-domestic Christmas, a non-native domestic Christmas tree planted on the land by my wife and her father after it spent the Christmas period in their living room. These trees have no intrinsic amenity value. When we purchased the land, some of the local residents asked us to remove them as they blocked their light and views. They have no more amenity value than any other established tree. If a TPO is placed on these trees, it should be placed on every tree in Sheffield. Why does this matter to us? Firstly, we want to open a private hire dog field, and the TPO would restrict our ability to manage the trees effectively in an area open to members of the public. On top of that, it poses both long-term and immediate financial burdens. Every time we need to do anything in the vicinity of these trees, it will cost us hundreds of pounds, it's financially crippling to a business that is yet to start trading. Secondly, our plan for the land is actually to plant more trees. We currently have 10 mature trees, 50 saplings and 150 hedge row bushes on pre-order for the planting season. Why should we seriously, we are now seriously considering not planting these, as these could be subject to TPOs in the future. I'm also deeply saddened that our, thank you, our plans to eliminate the Christmas tree have been stopped. This TPO seems to be placed on us not because of the trees' amenity value, but as a punishment following public complaints when we cleared the land. The planning officer himself stated we have to be seen to be doing something. The amenity values of these trees was never questioned for the last 40 years, and now all of a sudden they have enough to warrant a TPO. Finally, I wish I was allowed to show you what the land looks like now, the work we've done and how beautiful it looks, but I can't. Instead, I will leave you with comments from members of the public, which have said, "I absolutely love it guys, what a transformation, you should be so proud of yourselves, and this honour respects the area, unlike some I could mention, well done for your hard work", and thank you, I don't want to run over.
Thank, thank you John Clare. Simon, do you want to respond to those points I've picked up on, reporting inconsistencies, accuracy of address, the number of trees, breaching of GDPR? There might be one or two others in there that I've missed.
Yeah, I'll respond as best I can with the bits I can remember from that. So, the inaccuracies in the report, there was an inaccuracy with the number of trees on site, but I don't believe, and that was addressed in, in the full report. There was only on the notice, I think I put five trees, and then readdressed it as nine trees, because it was five trees, it was, six trees were protected, and then the total number included the ash trees, to be able to address why they weren't actually included in the, in the full TPO. The inaccuracies in the map, I don't believe there are any inaccuracies, that, the purpose of showing trees included and not included in the map is for us to be able to identify which trees are covered legally. It doesn't change the effectiveness of the TPO, it's just for, when works are carried out, it's then to be able to identify them separate from other trees. The oak tree, I don't believe is actually on there, because that's, that's not part of the site, but, sorry? Sorry. Yes.
Sorry, but we really don't want to get into...
Yeah, the, the, the fourth ash tree is in the far corner of the site, and it wasn't necessary to mark it as not being included in the TPO, because it was sufficiently far enough from the other trees, because it wasn't necessary to label every tree on site, just the ones adjacent to the protected trees, to be able to find, define the protected trees from the unprotected ones. In terms of the compaction damage, I disagree with saying that the footfall around the rooting area of a tree is worse than that of a, of a, of heavy plant. You know, we, we use BS5837 2012 in the, in, with new developments to be able to protect the rooting area of trees, and that, that basically prohibits the use of plant movement within the, the rooting areas to prevent that damage to the roots. And that's done for a reason, for exactly the reasons I stated in the report. I did mention a few times that the level of damage underground could not be determined. The visible damage was on top, but when there is heavy plant movement on site, there's almost no doubt that that will have degraded the, the structure of the soil. So, so we use a British, the British standard, BS5837 disagrees with that. That's the purpose of the British standard, to give guidance, plant movement on site with trees, and that prohibits plant to be moving within the rooting areas of trees, and states multiple times how this causes long-term damage. And that's a British standard which is used throughout the construction industry, which you would be familiar with as, as a civil engineer.
I'm sorry, but we can't, we can't engage in a to-and-fro of discussion. You have five minutes to make, to make your points, and the officer has a right to, to respond to them.
I believe I addressed the other points in the report, so the amenity value and the expediency facts, a proper system of amenity valuation was carried out. The expediency is the uncertainty for the use of the site, and also the damage that's already been carried out to the trees. The cost of applying to, to carry out work to protected trees is free, and all it is is an extra step that you would put in when wanting to carry out works to trees, it doesn't cost anything, and it's just a safeguarding step in there. I think you might talk on the GDPR. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair. Point regarding the inclusion of the detail identifying the landowner within the objection, that is identifying information, it ought not to have been included. That is a matter which we will take up with officers going forward to avoid that happening again in future. It is something that I think, in terms of ill effect, a little bit mitigated by the fact that you have the objector here in person as well identifying themselves, but nevertheless, it is a point that we'll take going forward.
I will add that the addresses have been, has been removed in the Appendix C where your formal objections have been lodged on two, two separate letters. Okay, open it to members' questions. Gary?
I just want to, Officer Simon, I would just, you know, tell the objector today about, you know, why we put the hawthorn in.
Sorry, that was, why, why has the hawthorn been included?
Yes, I mean, I know why we put these TPOs on trees, all different kinds of trees, so I just wonder if you can explain to the committee today about... So I just wonder if you can explain to the committee today about the reason why.
Okay, so the species of the tree is practically irrelevant. The amenity value doesn't, it can be one of the contributing factors for calculating amenity value, but it's not something that stops a tree having sufficient amenity value. It's the same as size, it could be a big tree, it could be a small tree. And all of these factors are taken into the amenity value calculation. I mean, hawthorns are actually a very high-value native tree that have, you know, winter fodder for habitat value and it has a potentially very long-lived species with all kinds of habitat for invertebrates. So it's almost up there with oak for me as having those particular habitat values. But I haven't attributed extra value for that. The amenity valuation is taken on, it's prominent, it's potential retention span and other factors such as that. Same as the Norway spruce, it may not be a native tree but it does have visual prominence and it adds the overall amenity value of the area and contributes sufficiently enough to be included.
Thank you Chair.
Is there any more questions? Any comments from members? Marianne?
Thank you Chair, and I read the landowner's response and noted the difference in language. And, you know, I want to thank you for coming today and stating your clear intention, you know, with regards to retaining the trees, so thanks for that. I mean, it seems to me like a win-win situation really. You know, the trees are retained and their local amenity value is retained and the owner can still apply for a dog park with trees in it. So I can't see why those two things are mutually exclusive, so I'll be minded to vote for this, thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, I also read the report. And there seems to be a bit of, a little bit unclear as the owner who's here today or the, as said, that he's no intention of removing these trees. I, and reading through the report, I understand it's for future reference in case anyone else comes along and after this guy's gone and tries to take the trees down once the TPO has been put in place. Also, also, I'd like to be clear, he did mention about the Christmas tree and decorating that at Christmas time. I understand from the report also, if I'm right, that that tree would still be allowed to be dressed and decorated because it wouldn't cause any damage to the tree. So along with that, I'm minded to approve the officer recommendation, thank you Chair.
Thank you Tony, if there are no more questions and, sorry, no more comments, we'll move to a vote. Can I see all those in favour of the officer recommendation? That's unanimous, but I do welcome the fact that you intend to, you fully want to keep those trees in place and cultivate them. Thank you, Mr Clare. Now move to item eight, the planning enforcement report, so that's over to Khalid.
Thank you Chair, my name's Khalid Mahmoud, I'm operations manager for planning enforcement. And this is a progress report on enforcement actions which have been authorised either by committee or by delegated authority. The purpose of this report is to inform committee members of progress on live enforcement cases. I'm here today to take any questions that you may have in relation to any of the actions that we have taken. I will do my best to answer those. If I can't answer them today, I will get back to you at a later date.
Thank you. Is there anything you wanted to highlight from these? No? Okay. Andrew, you have your hand up.
Thank you, thank you very much Chair, and can I thank the officers for the report, also for the amount of work going on. And, I mean, I say I'm back on this committee having had a few years off and we used to have sort of 10-page reports and all of a sudden I've got 30 pages. So I'm a bit concerned about the volume. I mean, I think it's probably a good thing in sense of our planning enforcement team have got their, I, you know, I own a number of sites where there's non-compliance. So I welcome, I welcome the fact that there's a lot, but I am a little bit concerned about how much there is and what more support we can give to the team. Can I just ask in particular about old mate of school David Lane? It's on page 51, 52 and 53 which seem to be duplicates, I'm just, or triplicates. And then again on 72, on page 72. I mean, this is, this is an incredibly important site. I mean, I was at planning committee when it was 14, 15 years ago when we agreed this. And we agreed it with very clear conditions. You know, it was one of these classic sites where really important building in a very sensitive area and, you know, an old school had been community use and there was no funding for continued community use and so it went to housing. And we as a planning committee put on conditions. And if you like, two of those units have remained with no problem, but the third unit, the owner has spent the last seven years trying to ignore every condition that we put on the planning authority, and the planning committee and then the planning authority. So just keen to know where we are in terms of an update on that. And I've got a number of residents who are watching this site very carefully and see this as a test case for the council and the planning authority that are we, are we serious about enforcing these conditions and making sure that when we say something is a sensitive site that we want the development to be as the developer has put in and not for the developer to just do whatever they feel they want to do. So I think it's a really important test case, so keen to know what the current update is and how page 72 relates to 51 and where we go from here in terms of making sure that the, that the, that the, planning regulations are followed on the site. Thanks Chair.
Thank you Andrew.
Thank you.
To respond Khalid?
Thank you Chair, so yes, you are absolutely right, there are a number of issues on this site in relation to planning breaches. We have served enforcement notice in relation to part of the site. And that we have had one prosecution and we are looking at a second prosecution. I've not got any date in front of me as to when that prosecution would be, but we are currently in doing the statements to report that to our litigation team for a prosecution. In relation to the other part of the site, yes, that there are breaches of the original planning permission however, you know, that they have submitted applications in to regularise part of that development. And I believe that is currently being considered as part of an application. So until we're clear on that, we wouldn't be able to do much until we've got the applications been determined.
Thank you, thank you for the chair, thank you that. So let's just be clear, so in terms of page 51, 52 and 53, well that's the excavation and you're saying that is going to be regularised. And it's, you haven't explained why it appears three times. And then just to confirm that in terms of page 72, you're saying that there's still need sent to legal for checks before before the next stage of enforcement is carried out. So they're two separate enforcement actions and you haven't got a date for the second one in terms of page 72. But can I just be checking that 51, 52 and 53 are just the same thing three times? And you're not actually making four points about the same site, it's just two?
Thank you Chair, that is right, yeah, they relate to the same enforcement case, it's just that they've been duplicated three times.
Mark?
Thank you, can I refer you to page 54, the bottom of that page? Peas Bloom House which is in my ward. And I looked at this case on, by request of neighbours of these people. I drove past it a few days ago and the outbuildings have come down, which is good. But they were particularly concerned that a large gas tank standing not far from the road in their field, I saw when I drove past a few days ago that that was still there. Is enforcement going to be enforced with removal of that?
Thank you Chair, I've not seen the gas tank, but we can look to see whether that would require planning permission or it falls within permitted development rights. But I can get back to you on that on a separate.
Thank you if you would, it was mentioned in some of the previous correspondences that I've been involved with as well. It was deemed to be too close to the road for a start, which is a danger. It's a liquid, big liquid gas tank, yeah.
Okay, but this, the gas tank doesn't fall within this notice, that was.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
Marianne, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you Chair. I just wanted to raise a question about something that's not on here, but it's something that has come to planning committee and has been discussed publicly on numerous occasions. Am I right to ask about it?
Is it an enforcement action?
Yeah, so it's the Troutbeck Road case. So it's where the applicant agreed to a condition to create a walking encyclopath along the river. And then applied to vary that condition and the planning committee didn't agree with that. And then the planning inspector has agreed with the planning committee that that condition actually needs to be followed through. And that, the planning inspector decision was back in June, I think. So I wondered, presumably enforcement action is the next step, but it's not appeared on here. Is that just because it's in process?
Yes, it is in process, I mean, we're currently in the process of drafting an enforcement notice for that.
Tony?
Yeah, thank you Chair, yeah, thank you Khalid. And I'm pleased to see that the enforcement action did work at the top, sorry, I'm talking about top of page 80 now, about the Royal Oak at Mosborough. I'm glad the enforcement action did take the desired effect because although I did object to it at the planning stage at the beginning, I realised there were lots and lots of people that really wanted that store to be there, although I objected to the way it was done. And I also felt that what you did in regards to enforcement was the correct way to get this done as it should have been, as it was on the, on the planning, on the planning papers when it first came to planning. The only thing about it is, the only one objection I've got about it at the moment is, or should I say, the only one I have had, is this, at the back of the shop, there's a very noisy refrigerator motor. I don't know if you've had any complaints about it from residents, but a resident has been in touch with me about it, that's the only thing. Is there anything we can do about that or is that not part of the planning process? Thank you.
We don't know anything about that. Again, we can certainly look into that as that may require planning permission depending on what is the size and whether it's part, any PDRs have been removed as part of that planning application. But I can look at that separately and get back to you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, thank you Khalid, thank you, thank you Chair.
Any other members? In that case, I'm glad Andrew's picked up on the number of times the same site appears. And sometimes it seems to be almost identical in these papers, which does make it hard to follow. It would be better if they were grouped together or if you have actually put in doubles that they're taken out. I'm looking at Forward Head in Sheffield 10 on page 48, Shirecliff Lane on page 67 and Attic Cliff Road in Sheffield 9 on page 70, 71, there are others. But they basically seem to be the same thing, which does make it confusing for us as members to follow whether it's down to separate complaints or issues that are being picked up from you.
Thank you Chair, I will look into that. It could be the case where two enforcement notices have been served on the same site. So they could be worded slightly differently to it, but I will look into those duplicates that you've raised and for next time, thank you.
Chair, I've just noticed on the report that in the notice type field, certainly for at least one, one is referring to a breach of condition and the other one then referring to an enforcement notice. So maybe that's why they're appearing in that way, but I'm sure the officer will investigate further, thank you Chair.
I think the, so yes, that's helpful. The other thing I think members would really welcome is to get a sense of whether the number of enforcement actions is growing or contracting at this time.
Thank you Chair, I will look at those figures and if it's okay with the Chair, I can report that for the next committee. Look at, compare the numbers as to how the numbers have been, number of cases that we've been getting and what actions we've been taking.
In my own ward, I'm aware of the ones that, well, you flagged up one that I wasn't aware of, but I was aware of the others. But in the space of this last week, I've picked up two. One where I put an initial inquiry and I won't go into the details, but there seems to be an escalation from what the, the person is doing on their property, which is seriously causing aggravation for the neighbours, both in terms of rat infestation and noise. And the other one has also come up. Whereas I'm fairly lucky in that most months I don't get these kind of complaints. But I think it's different, it's probably different for councillors, Sanger and Woodcraft, I suspect. But, and Stockbridge, yeah. But we do appreciate this coming to committee. I wouldn't recommend that they sort of come every month or even every quarter, but I do think it's important that members have an understanding of the work that's involved and what you have to do and what constraints you're working under and what powers you do have to make sense of the planning process. So thank you very much Khalid, we'll let you get back to work. So, moving on, we now come to item nine. We know that one item has been deferred, so we're moving on to 9B, planning application 25 stroke 02062 full. That's Stannington Methodist Church, Stannington Road, Sheffield S6, 6AN. And that's on page 107 of the agenda. And there is a supplementary report, I believe, as well, which should have been made available to you. Yeah, have it, it's under here, just reminding members that that's there too. So over to Andrew to present this.
Yeah, thank you very much Chair, my name is Andrew Burton, I work in the planning service and I'm the North Area Manager in Development Management. I just apologise if I'm a little bit hard to hear today, I'm just suffering with a bit of a cold. So if anybody would like me to repeat anything at any stage, please just let me know and I'll do my best to speak a bit more clearly. So yeah, this particular application relates to the former Stannington Methodist Church, which is located on the corner of Uppergate Road and Stannington Road near to the centre of the village. The building represents a significant local landmark due to its corner location, its size, architectural features and age, which are all factors in it being locally listed. However, the bill has been stood vacant now for a number of years dating back to 2021, which is when the church use ceased. As you might be able to see from the aerial photos in this slide, the site's in a predominantly residential area with houses neighbouring the site on Stannington Road and Grease Lane, most closest. However, other neighbouring uses include Stannington Infant School to the west and Stannington Library and the. and Stannington Library and the park to the south. To the south east is the Peacock Public House. This photo shows the front elevation of the former church as seen from the Upper Gate roadside. As can be seen, the building has some considerable stature, being a former church that was constructed in the late 1800s. The architectural and historic details of the building are important reasons behind why it was locally listed back in 2022. The building isn't nationally listed however, which affords it the status of a non-designated heritage asset. The pedestrian footpath, which is shown in this photo, falls within the application site, but the graveyard part has been kept outside. This would remain in Methodist Church ownership and it is still visited. The site also includes a single storey building that is located to the rear of the main church building. This was built at a similar time to the church for the purpose of a Sunday school. It's currently connected to the main former church building by a small link extension. This is the view of the western side of the site that's hidden from the road by the main building, boundary walls. This photo shows the relationship and separation distances that exist to Steinton Infant School, which is visible on the centre left of the photo. Again, just for me to mention, the graveyard area is excluded from the application site. This is the closer view of the rear of the single storey former Sunday school building. The site includes the overgrown grassland area, which is located to the rear of the building, that would form of the main external amenity space areas for future residents. The proposal is to convert the building into nine apartments. Seven of those would have two bedrooms and two would be single bedroom units. As with the previous Methodist Church use, the development has not proposed to include any parking within the site, which would mean that the demand would need to be catered for on neighbouring streets. The submission details that the apartments would be marketed at the over 55s. However, no means to limit the occupancy criteria in that manner forms part of the application. The development would be catered for by outside amenity space. However, as has already been mentioned, the graveyard area is being kept outside the site. Other provisions include a communal bin store and back storage areas. Internally, new floors will be created in the buildings to facilitate subdivision into separate flats and a communal staircase and lift shaft would serve the main building. Five of the apartments will be located within floors one and two of both the church and the former Sunday school building. Two apartments within the latter would have an upper floor that is contained within the roof space. The plans also include an e-bike and mobility scooter store. Three of the apartments will be located within the newly created third and fourth level of the former church and will be accessed by staircase and wheelchair lift. External alterations will be kept to a minimum. A small link extension that currently connects the two buildings will be removed. The main former church building would see some alterations to the windows to have their sills and heads lowered. Those changes needed to reflect the proposed internal subdivision of the building so that new habitable rooms are provided with sufficient light and outlook. Roof lights would be added for similar reasons. Replacement glazing would be installed, having a similar appearance to the existing, including the two distinguished Star of David windows. Similar changes proposed about the single storey former Sunday school building and external doors would be added to both. The application received 25 objections from local residents and Bradfield Parish Council objects also. And some of the main concerns expressed include the absence of any parking provision and the impact this would have on nearby streets. It's felt that the cycle and mobility scooter storage areas would be insufficient to compensate for lack of vehicle parking, when also taking into account the location of the site and the infrequent bus services. Concerns are raised about overdevelopment, harm to the character and appearance of the building and assert that it should still be used as an alternative form of community use. Free representation have been received in support. The support's welcomed, the proposals to bring back into use the vacant building in a sympathetic manner. References also made to housing need and the point is made that the site location is well connected to the services and facilities that exist within Stannington. The committee report summarises the assessment of the proposal that's been carried out by officers. The report explains that the site is located in a UDP housing area where residential development is a preferred use. Additionally, the council does not currently have a five year housing land supply, meaning that the tilted balance is engaged that is set out within national policy. In those circumstances, permission should be granted unless any adverse impacts would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. The proposal would result in a number of significant benefits, including bringing back into use a vacant, non-designated heritage asset in a sympathetic manner. This would on the whole preserve the external appearance of the building and its key features and details. In addition, the development would deliver a significant windfall contribution of nine dwellings, helping with addressing the housing land supply deficit and providing new homes on previously developed land. In terms of this benefit, it's acknowledged that the absence of any car parking to serve the development isn't ideal. However, a previous application for a higher number of apartments, which included parking provision when the site was objected to by highways due to safety concerns of the proposed access being on a bend. Those factors combined with the surveys that's been undertaken to look at the availability of on-street parking in the area. It's hardly been well positioned in relation to local facilities within Stannington and the reduced number of flats are all considerations that have meant the development would not have an unacceptable impact on highway safety in the opinion of officers. It should also be noted that the site operated without car park when it was in use of the church. Furthermore, the fallback position allows for changes of over types of use, including education. Other building reopening is a church without the need for any further planning permission. And the development itself would provide an acceptable standard of amenity for new residents. Overall, therefore, it's considered that the tilted balance weighs in favour of the application being granted and approval is recommended. So that sort of concludes the main presentation. However, I will just report on the supplementary report. So since our main officer assessment report was published, we have received objections from all three of the Stannington Ward members. So just to summarise that briefly, all three of those Ward members acknowledged that there's no benefit to the building remaining empty. However, they asked for the application to be refused with their key concern being the lack of suitable parking. They also feel that the parking surveys that were carried out were flawed on the basis that they're carried out in the evening rather than the daytime, where they feel there's more demand for the parking for things like the library, pavilion and a medical centre in the park. So officers have put a bit of a response together on that. So that explains that the parking surveys were required to be carried out in the evening because that's where you get most of the people that come home from work and more of a demand for long term parking rather than short term parking. It explains as well that this particular proposal has been a bit of a journey. So with the previous application, it did include parking within the site. So this isn't a case where the applicant is trying to ignore the requirement to provide any parking. They did make an attempt initially. However, it's just that the only viable location to get an access into the site is right on where an S bend is located. And it's just felt that that provizibility, combined with the conflicts that you'd have with other junctions and the close proximited Stannington Infant School, are all such that that was just too unsafe to create an access and a car park in that location. So whilst we would entirely agree that it's a shame that the proposal doesn't include any inside parking and we would like that to be the case, it is felt that taking everything into account that the existence and availability of on-street parking in the area and the benefits associated with the proposal are such that the tilted balance weighs in favour of the application being granted.
Thank you Andrew. We have one speaker speaking in favour of the application and that is the agent Caroline McIntyre, who has spoken to us before, so I'm sure you know how to work the microphone. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name's Caroline McIntyre and I'm the agent for this application. As noted in the report, the church closed in 2021 due to a decline in congregation. There's another Methodist church within a mile and alternative community facilities within the local area. Our initial application was for 12 apartments and this scheme provided onsite parking. This application was refused with a key issue being the access into the site and the visual impact of parking. Since this decision, we've been working with the officers to agree a scheme that overcomes these concerns. We undertook a second parking survey over seven days and this concluded there were over 100 spaces available on the surrounding streets. It's also worth noting that there was no dedicated parking for the church and any churchgoers or other users of the building arriving by car would have parked on the surrounding streets. The proposals include a large secure cycle store and the site has good links to public transport and local services, encouraging alternative and sustainable forms of transport. The removal of the parking onsite also provides enhanced amenity space and opportunities for biodiversity. This application reduced the number of units from 12 to nine, decreasing the number of interventions into the building. And a significant benefit of the proposals is the replacement of the UPVC windows with hardwood timber windows. The existing building needs an alternative use and it's beginning to suffer from being left empty. Significant investment is required to maintain this important local landmark and the proposals will secure a viable future for it. Access to the graves would remain unaffected with the church retaining ownership of these and maintenance of this area. And in summary, the scheme would deliver nine new homes and a meeting identified housing need. The proposals would provide a viable future use for the building with a sensitive conversion scheme. We therefore ask that you support the application and grant planning permission for this. And my client and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Caroline. In well under five minutes, make it less than three. Okay, I was seeing hands going up. I've got Mark again first, then Tony, then Andrew, then Henry. Parking, you know, is a big deal. Page 117, it would seem that as parking is such a big deal, the ideal residence to attract are people who use bicycles and e-bikes. One of the objectors has said, the cycle and mobility store does not appear sufficient in size to store these and make them easy to get out. And the outdoor cycle stores are not secure, insufficient cycle spaces are shown and it is unclear where charging for e-bikes would be. No electrical, well, yeah, unclear where charging for e-bikes would be. Now, given that it's a high priority for this particular building to have bicycles and e-bikes, is that a sufficient space security charging facility for these flats? Isn't that something that would be resolved by condition? Anyway, you'll want to answer Andrew.
Partly yes. I think some of these comments within the representations were based on the initial set of plans that came within this application. But there was some amended plans as well, which increased the amount of cycle storage as well. So we have got some internal within the building, within the lower ground floor, and that's for mobility scooters as well. But then what was added on at later dates, kind of away, is an external storage facility as well for cycles. So I think that has been partly addressed now. But we do get another opportunity as well just to vet the capacity of those provisions to ensure that they're at a suitable level. So that's condition 13, which relates to cycle parking accommodation.
Yes, it doesn't quantify, but it states that that would have to be worked out before work can proceed. Tony?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yes, I went on the site visit yesterday and along with one or two others of this committee. And what a fantastic looking building it is and it's great to see for a start to bring that building back into use rather than let it just deteriorate. But I have to say, looking around there yesterday along with other members, that parking is going to be very difficult up there, in my view. The on-street parking as it is looks pretty much full up there that I saw yesterday and this would only exacerbate the situation. I don't know what else we can do with that, but just to say that one of the objectors put, over 55s will still have cars. Now, I concur with that, obviously. I mean, once you get to 55, you don't stop driving a car. Well, I'm glad I didn't anyway.
Tony, can you make it a question?
Yeah, yeah, so is there anything we can do up there to ease that situation, please? Thanks Chair.
I think not readily as far as actually providing any parking within the site is concerned, unfortunately. It is something that we explored previously as part of the previous application. So if you could see on that plan now, what's shown on the slide, the area of what's the main body in green, which is now the proposed to be the external amenity space area behind the single storey building. With the first application, that was all proposed to be car parking and provide seven spaces. However, the only way you could get into it was creating a new access right opposite, right in that bend corner there, which is also directly opposite the Greaves Lane junction and we're right next to the Stannington Infant School site. And if you were to just carry on in front of the church, the road bends again because it's actually an S bend that wraps around the former church. So that was objected to by highways on safety grounds. So regrettably, we don't think that the site can accommodate any car parking within the curridge without giving rise to unacceptable highway safety concerns.
Andrew?
Thank you Chair, and very much continuing the same theme. I mean, it's a very beautiful building and really keen to find a way of keeping it. So yeah, I found the site visit really useful and I understand why the previous attempt at getting attempt at getting car parking spaces on the site or the constriction in terms of where the stone wall is related to where the builders are made that impossible last time. So point of pedantry and then a question. So a point of pedantry is surely if it's on a Methodist church, it's not a star on David, it's a creative star. All we could say is a pair of inverted triangles or a hexagram or something. Clearly not a star of David if it's in a Methodist church. But anyway, that's a point of pedantry. But in terms of the question, it comes back to parking these 100 spaces. If we're saying, where are we saying these 100 spaces, and we only need 16 for these, or ideally we need a number even smaller than that, where are they going to be? Because when we were there yesterday, I thought we were saying that there's no bit of that bit of Stanington Road that's really appropriate, that there's other roads a little bit further away. And are we saying they're going to be there? Or is there a danger that we're going to end up, some of these people who, as we've heard from the two previous questions, some of these people are going to have cars, but this is not Walkley or City Centre, so there are going to be cars. So is it going to be the car park for the park and the library? Or is it going to be, is it going to bleed into, say, the car park for the Peacock? Or is it going to be other, these other narrow roads? And are we confident that there will be these, you know, up to 16 spaces readily available on the roads?
Yeah, I'll probably be tempted to bring in Helen in a minute just to comment on the situation from her perspective and the assessment that she's carried out. I think I'd just make a general point about, say, on Upper Gate Road itself, and indeed some of Stanington Road, you have got existing markings, traffic regulation orders, which, you know, are there to prevent illegal parking. So there's yellow line markings for the school either side of it, and also for the bus stops as well. On the areas where those markings aren't in place, people are free to park. But obviously, it's a first-come, first-served basis, as close as what they'll be able to get. So I'd expect that most of that parking would end up on Upper Gate Road and possibly Greaves Lane.
So, thanks, Chair. So in terms of Upper Gate Road and Greaves Lane, there's no... I mean, Greaves Lane is relatively narrow. Upper Gate Road seemed a more normal width, and you're confident that Upper Gate Road can take that extra traffic generated by the provision of these flats?
Helen, would you be happy to come in at this point?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, the survey that was done, it was actually a 200 metres radius, more or less, from the site, because that seems an appropriate distance. The only things that were considered were spaces on the highway. So in terms of car parks, they weren't included in the survey. Yes, I think basically the feeling is that 16 spaces can safely be accommodated within that area. Yes, it may displace some existing traffic, sorry, some existing parking. But from my perspective, my consideration is, are potentially an additional 16 vehicles wanting to park on the street likely to be a highway safety problem? And I'm quite confident that they won't be. As I've said, we've also got to consider that there is no parking at the minute with the site, and that certainly I would suggest potentially when it was in use as a church or some of the other uses that could go on there without planning permission could generate significantly more on-street parking demand than, you know, the current proposal. So that is the basis that I've made my decision on. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Helen. Henry, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Two, one, but I think they're both pretty short. Though some of the objectors had expressed an interest in this wonderful sort of old building being brought into use with some other sort of community use. But has anyone to the council's knowledge actually come forward with a proposal other than conversion to residential that would keep it in use?
I think shortly after it closed as a church in 2021, it was nominated as an asset of community value. Then I think there was a crowdfunding exercise attempt to try and purchase the building. But my understanding is that insufficient funds were raised, sorry, in order for that purchase to happen and then for it to remain as community use. So, you know, it's been closed now for four years and vacant. For those that were on the site visit yesterday, they'll be able to see there's already signs of deterioration within the building, which obviously the longer it stays vacant, the more deterioration we're going to get. And it puts it in risk in other respects as well. There is another Methodist church in Stanington, it's a little bit further down the hill. But that's what the Methodist church people said as to why they felt there wasn't this congregation size and a need for two Methodist churches to be so close together.
Like four years is sufficient for alternative use to have been found by now if it was that high up the list. And second one. The modified designs got increased, got an area for cycle storage that mentions e-bikes and mobility scooters, including charging. Is it conditioned that that area has fire detection and suppression in it?
I think that would just slightly be on the planning sphere. That'd probably be building regulations, I would expect.
Despite a lot of recent incidences with charging issues with batteries on various mobility devices, it's still not in building regs.
It's not within planning legislation either, so we wouldn't have any... I'm afraid I would consider that as no material planning consideration.
And Cliff, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. There are recommendations as to the amount of parking spaces. First of all, what would that number be for this configuration? Is it 12 as councillor, or 16 as councillor Sangha?
Yeah, we gave the figure of 16 in the report, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Now, with regards to the parking on the road, I would imagine there's a tidal nature to parking. There's a school there, and there'll have been, you know, cars will come, possibly school teachers. And I'm just wondering how that would fit with residents who were then going to, you know, drive off to work. I mean, what you wouldn't want is an overlap. I'm just trying to get my head around some of this, because when I was there yesterday, and I didn't see any of you there, but I was there. I took the only remaining car parking space on the road, and so I think it's going to be quite challenging. So just, I mean, do you have a feel for this? You know, what are the purposes of the other cars parked there? It does seem to me to be for the school.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you're in an area that's got so many uses, it is quite sort of difficult to identify if you're just there for a brief moment in time, half an hour in the middle of the day, as to, you know, where they're visiting. Whether it's, you've obviously got the park there, you've got, within the park, you've got the library, you've got tennis courts, you've got a cafe, you've got a medical centre as well on Upper Gate Road, pub nearby, and also the school. So, and obviously all those houses which are on this aerial photo now that we're looking at. So all of those are not guaranteed to have within Kirkridge parking either. But, yeah, I think that would obviously come back to the highways assessment that's been undertaken and the parking survey, and how Helen answered that before. So, yes, we, in an ideal world, we would want this development to include parking provision in the site. It's just not been possible to accommodate that. But that was the same when it was operating as a church.
Thank you. And just a final bit of a point which the highways officer might want to address. Can I gently point out that when the church was in use and people had been driving to it, the congregation was actually very, very small, and so there may not have been that many people wanting to park on the road. I don't know whether you want to address that or just take that as a point?
No, that's fine, thanks. I think, yeah, yes, I mean, obviously, you know, that's not something we know of because, you know, it's not there now. But what I would say, you know, there can be potentially, there can be weddings, there can be funerals. As we're saying, there are uses that it could change to within the same use class that could generate significantly. You know, I think a school was one of them where, again, you know, you would generate significantly more parking demand than you would with the current proposal, but I take the comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Hugh. We'll move now to members' comments. Sorry, your hand shot up. Or is that another question coming?
I was anticipating you using the word comments.
Thank you, Mark. I'll let you go first, and then Alan, then Henry, and then others.
Right. Right, a use has to be found for this building. As been said, any use will involve vehicles. I can't imagine a use that doesn't involve vehicles. One of my daughters performed in a concert there 20 years ago, and a large number of vehicles from doting parents descended on the area then, you know. The buyers would be advised of any of these flats. They'd be advised through their surveyors of the lack of car space. So they're not going to be buying in ignorance. It's not as if they're going to be arriving there with their furniture and thinking, well, where do I put my car? They'll know about in advance. But the key thing is the building has to be used. It has to survive. So I will support this motion for this to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and former doting parent. Alan?
Thank you, Chair. Page 127, second paragraph, that is Policy H40 of the UDP, which are primarily concerned with housing development. Expect sites to be adequately served by transport facilities, by safe access, appropriate parking, and not to endanger pedestrians. Policy H5C requires there to be appropriate off-street parking to meet the needs of the people living there. And that, to me, says it shouldn't go ahead.
Thank you, Alan. Henry?
Thank you, Chair. You know, we have a responsibility, I feel, to bring disused buildings back into use, and we have a responsibility to provide more housing. There's very few unused buildings across Sheffield that we could bring back into use that include their own off-street parking. So we have to accept that bringing all of those empty buildings back into residential where applicable is going to have an effect on parking. But we also have a responsibility to provide better public transport, better active travel, and reduce car dependency. And that's it sometimes in this committee and also across an awful lot of other committees in the council. So I'll be happy to support the recommendation on this one and get the building back into use.
Thank you, Henry. I had a look at the buses that serve the area this morning. Because yesterday, while we were on site visits, I did see two different buses. I believe it was the 61, and the other one was an 81. The 81 does provide a service seven days a week, albeit a reduced one during the daytime and evening hours. On a Sunday, it drops down to two hourly. The 61 and 62 run Monday to Saturday. And they come, because one heads off to Bradfield and the other is quicker for getting into town than the one that goes to Bradfield first and comes round back to town. They come in fairly short succession, but they are at least hourly through the day for six days a week. I think a lot of people would like to see that bus running seven days a week because there would be other advantages, not just to the residents living locally. So it's not served by a brilliant bus service. We approved a new build in Pittsmore on the basis that there would not be any onsite parking. But it is served by more buses, so I do appreciate that the decision here is more finely balanced. But I do think we have to be mindful that... Am I allowed to finish, or do you want to come in? Oh, no, no. I do think we have to be mindful that we cannot show an existing housing supply that is required. And that does tilt the balance in favour of the building. And like Mark, I do believe that people who would be viewing this as a possible location to spend many years would be mindful of the fact that parking in the area is not brilliant. It's possible, but they may have to walk some distance to pick up their motor vehicles if they wish to have motor vehicle travel. So on balance, I am favouring this application, but I am mindful that it's not the kind of site that will appeal to everyone. But that is up to the applicant to run with that. So I will now pass to Vicky.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to draw members' attention to paragraph 116 of the NPPF. Just to remind you, I've sat some material consideration. And it just states that development should only be prevented or refused on highway ground if there would be an unacceptable impact on highway safety or the residual cumulative impacts of the road network following mitigation would be severe, take into account all reasonable future scenarios. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we will proceed to a vote at this point. Can I see those members in favour of this application? And those against? Thank you. Are there any abstentions? The application is passed. We have your permission. And like you, Henry, I'm pleased to see a non-designated heritage asset being given a fresh lease of life. So we move on now to the Record of Planning Appeal Submissions and Decisions on page 133 of the agenda. This item is for noting, but if you have any questions, please let us know. If something comes to mind afterwards, you can always email officers. Okay, are members happy to note that? Thank you very much. Item 11, date of next meeting, Tuesday, the 9th of December 2025, at 2pm here. And if we've got site visits, they'll almost certainly be the day before. So thank you all for attending. Enjoy the rest of your day.